Ready? I know, I just like doing that. All right, four o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number A1, roll call and possible action. Excuse all the absent members of the governing board.
Mayor Andres Hernandez.
President.
Commissioner Azar Wajardo.
President.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
Great. Okay. All right, we can move on. Since the, I am the CEO of the City of FAR, we're going to take this out of order. First and foremost, I want to make sure, make a couple of comments on behalf of myself, of course, and the City Commission can say their own opinion on what I'm about to say. But I want to thank everybody for being here today. I hope people are watching as well. And as you know, I'm bilingual, so I tend to speak in bilingual fashion. So bienvenidos todos, buenas tardes. Son las cuatro de la tarde. Estamos aquí para esta junta especial de la Ciudad de FAR. Vamos a hablar tocante el tema de inversión en la Ciudad de FAR. Pero más importante, I want to be sure que todos escuchen muy claramente porque hay un poco de confusión con lo que está pasando en nuestro pueblo. Y realmente, la confusión no viene de la comisión, no viene del público de la Ciudad de FAR. Lo que viene más confusión es, quite frankly, misinformation and a little misguided opinion de gente. Todos tienen su opinión. Esto es lo más bonito de Estados Unidos. Es el país más bonito, más fuerte de todos Estados Unidos. Y tenemos la capacidad de poder escuchar, poder hablar, puede decir su opinión, right? It's our constitutional right to do it, which is, again, the best thing we ever had. And I love it, for one. Me encanta tener dialogue. So, one of the things that, que ha ocurrido, que me han llamado gente, francamente, que no son de FAR, pero me han llamado gente de afuera, es este, quiere saber, oye, ¿qué pasó? Con este post, as they call it. Obviously, just so you guys know, I don't do social media. Es mi familia lo que hace, so por eso me di cuenta. Y one of the posts estaba enseñando un comentario. And I'm sure Commissioner Medina, he va a poder hablar en sus propias palabras, tocante el comisionador. Y dice algo, el tema, something like, "Make him a hero." Pero estaba, yo personalmente estaba confundido de qué me estaba hablando. So, y la persona que lo mandó le, ¿y qué pasa con esto? What does this have to do with anything? He said, "Well, it's not, it's being said in a, it's not in the right atmosphere." And I don't, I don't think the commissioner means it, but can you clarify it? Because you are the mayor. I said, "Sure, no problem." So I went and looked it up. I looked at the story. I looked at the video. And it's pretty damaging video for the human race, to begin with. I mean, we should never behave that way. A couple of things that I observed, and it's just my opinion of what I saw, is I saw peaceful protesters, which in the United States you're allowed to do. You can walk downtown McAllen anytime you want. And I give kudos to the city of McAllen for protecting his residents and his businesses. And then I saw an unfortunate gentleman, for whatever reason he had, I'm sure he has his own thinking, ability, and rationale for doing what he did. But what he did, in my opinion, was very wrong. Not only did he behave in an unprofessional and, quite frankly, an unhuman way, and verbalized some palabras que nunca se ven de sí, cualquier importa qué cultura hacemos, qué color hacemos, esas palabras no se usan entre nosotros, los humanos. Eso ya debe pasar. Pero he did. Y eso causó mucho, a mucha gente que se sentiera. And they have a right to be upset. Even, I was upset. I couldn't believe that it was happening in our great Rio Grande Valley. To that end, there was a commentary made by Commissioner Medina. And by his own admission, he can speak to that, que le hicieron, "Make him a hero," right away, right? And so, I called the commissioner. "El domingo, oye, ¿qué está pasando aquí? Me están mandando estos screenshots. I don't really understand. The storyline, help me, explícame, por favor. Uno, somos amigos. El segundo, para entender yo como alcalde, qué es lo que estás pensando." And, a mí, lo que me platicó, y yo lo conozco cinco años, right? Es este, mira, este es un error. It's just a mistake. I didn't go through the whole thing. And I commented on it because I thought some businesses in McAllen were being assaulted on. Y iban a hacer daño los negocios. Entonces, alguien vino to rescue, a defender el negocio. So I commented, you know, que sea, "I'm glad, he's a hero." Well, that's an honest mistake. And he said, "It's my fault." Y yo no me estoy haciendo que ese teléfono, que es el Facebook, que, no, no, no estoy haciendo excusas. Yo lo hice, y lo hice en error como humano, that's it. And I'm sorry. Le dije, "Okay, está bueno, pues just make sure que le explicas a la comisión." Porque todo más, we're going to get the same message. And so, we want to be sure the citizens of FAR say muy bien que just last, the week before that, August 1st, we just talked about this. Most of you were in the room. We said, "In no shape or form, estamos disponibles, aceptar gente with racial remarks. We don't want any police brutality. We have wonderful police forces all over the nation. But one bad apple doesn't define the police department. There's bad doctors, there's bad news reporters, there's bad protesters. But just because eso existe, no todo grupo es malo. That's not the way it works." So we know que hay gente mala. We know, okay? And so, in my opinion, I just wanted him to realize, como alcalde, le dije, "Mira, en esa junta hablamos de esos temas, y también vino el police chief." Luego, él se paró y explicó qué era el plan, cómo pensaba él como el jefe de la policía. Porque estábamos, todos bien asustados, y también estábamos todos bien tristes con lo que le pasó a Mr. Floyd. Le mandamos pesadillas, right? To the family. Because it was devastating to know that an American, or even a human being, can be treated in that fashion in our country. It is completely unacceptable. And we stood up and we said, "That's not what FAR represents. None of its citizens will ever accept it. We will never accept it in any shape or form." So we made that very crystal clear. So, pero está un poco confundido, que pues, ¿por qué está este comentario on this post on Facebook? Ya me explicó. I said, "Okay, fine." I just wanted to understand. Porque tarde o temprano, como todos, cuando yo hago un error, right? Es humano. Y eso, I'm not anywhere near ser perfecto. Y hago errores todos los días. Pero es mi responsabilidad to, I have to own it and learn from it. And that's fine. But we're a very forgiving country. We're a beautiful community in the City of FAR. Mistakes get made every day. That's not a reason to demand the mayor's head or a commissioner's head. It doesn't work that way. You know, that's, in my opinion, that's over the top. You don't need to be doing that. We need to take people at their word. We need to accept people when they make an honest mistake. And, pero eso no cambia la opinión de la comisión. La comisión claramente, on June 1st, 2020, we made it very clear what our position was as a commission. And so, there'd be no doubt. I know there's people trying to escalate this más de lo que es. No se va a hacer. La comisión hablamos muy claramente our position, and it will not change. No matter what tactics people try to use to portray that we're a certain community, we are not. We're a beautiful, God-loving community in the City of FAR, a very proud community, y eso no va a cambiar. So that's just my commentary on that before we continue. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything, or Commissioner Medina, I know you had asked me for some time. So I'll give you guys time to articulate a message if anybody has anything else.
I'd like to make a comment. And I wrote it down.
Is public testimony allowed first? I know you have people on the order, but it feels like the public's voice is being dropped a little bit.
Well, that's good. The point is, as the mayor, as I delayed at the beginning, I have the rights.
Are you again, as a public servant, which one?
Yes. Which one, which one what?
Public servant, are you again, sir?
Which one do you think I am?
What? I'm asking you again.
Oh. Mayor. Mayor of the City of FAR. And the mayor of the City of FAR has the authority to go out of order, and which we're out of order. That's what's happening right now. Those are the rules of engagement.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Next.
And as the mayor has said, I made a comment in social media, and I've been criticized for what I'd said. And it's my own comment. It has nothing to do with the City Commission, or the mayor, or anybody. It's something that I made. And I wrote my comment so that I don't forget what I want to say. You know, I have served this community for many years. I've been elected mayor, I've been elected commissioner. And the great City of FAR, the people, the residents of FAR, have entrusted in me as a public servant several times. And I'm very grateful for them electing me all this time. You know, and I believe in the freedom of speech and the liberties granted by the Constitution. I grew up in a time where Hispanic, we faced many instances of discrimination and injustices. As a migrant traveling different states, I remember getting spanked in school just because I spoke Spanish. So I'm aware of that. And I have been on the side to push for change. So I sympathize with the movement to push social justice. But I also believe that the destruction of businesses or the properties is unacceptable. I admit that I'm not familiar with all the ins and outs of social media. Therefore, I jumped to a conclusion and made a mistake. I strong, I'm, as a strong supporter of business community, I reacted in support of what I thought was the business owner protecting his property. And I know fully, watched, as I watched the video later, because I just, I didn't watch it at the beginning, the whole video. And I realized that there was an oversight on my part. And I put, making that realization, I deleted my comment in social media or in Facebook. Because I'm against violence. I'm also against racism and any such action. You know, and any time that somebody would say something that started cussing in Facebook, I would delete them as a friend in Facebook. And I sincerely apologize and will be more mindful of understanding the complete picture before sharing and commenting on social media. And I have learned a lot from this experience. I'm committed to working closely with our mayor, our city commission, our staff, our entire community. And I strongly continue to support our police department to keep moving far forward in a positive direction and making sure our community is one where everyone feels safe and protected. I've been a public servant, and I appreciate all the years that people have elected me, several terms. And I will continue to serve as far, as soon, as, as long as the people of FAR accept me as a public servant. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Sure. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Yes, Commissioner.
Commissioner Caballero, for that lady. I've known Ricardo for about five years. And, I mean, of course, this is, I also called Ricardo as soon as this came up. And, quite frankly, he said basically the same thing that Mayor Berlosio said. And I take him at his word. One of the things that I do find, I don't particularly like, is when, you know, the word racist is used. Because I do come from a generation of, that Ricardo was in. You know, there, people long forget the history of South Texas. And South Texas was a segregated community, all South Texas. And calling a man who lived through that era a racist is, to me, is not, is not an honest thing to say because you did not live in his shoes. You did not go to Catholic schools. There were for the whites, and Catholic schools for the Hispanics. Baptist churches, there were for the whites, Baptist churches where the Hispanics. Segregated elementary schools. All, you know, cities separated by, you know, by railroad tracks. And the new generation does not appreciate that. People who are not from the valley do not appreciate that. And I'm sorry that you find that amusing, but again, this is just my personal opinion. And, again, this is something that is quite personal to me. And because my father did have a grocery store that was only on the Mexican side of Alamo. And again, to use that word, to me, is, you have to take it, you know, just be careful with the word that you use. And Ricardo, to me, has, I have, you know, he's a very conservative man. He has his own opinions. But never has the air voiced anything, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that is not respectful. So, that was my opinion. Thank you.
And Ricardo, thank you.
Hello, Commissioner Daniel Chavez. I've known Mr. Medina for close to four years already. As I became elected, or before I became elected, Mr. Medina walked the streets with me. And every person that I met had great respect for him. And great respect, and I came, and the stories that I heard as he walked the streets and told the people about me, those stories were not about racist. Those stories were not about him being mean to people. All the stories were about all the great things he has done with the people of the City of FAR. Stories as he grew up, as he was a city commissioner, and when he was the mayor, and currently the city commissioner of FAR. All the changes that have happened during his terms in the City of FAR as he served as a public servant. I also called him, and I received some texts about a mistake that he did. And most important, I look up to him in many ways, and I still do now. What Mr. Medina has done today shows me that I will, at one point, if I continue being a public servant, will make a mistake, just like he has done today. And at that moment, I need to take ownership of the mistake and say what's truth, just like what he said today. He didn't overlook of social media, we do all the time. How many times haven't we looked at Facebook? I don't have a Facebook, but, my wife runs my Facebook, but sometimes she's showing me stuff, and people are just flying through the Facebook messages and posts. And we tend to make our own thing about what we just saw or read. And that's just what Mr. Medina did. And I'm proud to say that I'll continue looking on how he leads this city along with great, a great city mayor. But what he did today is a great thing. And I know I'm not perfect, and neither are many of us in this room. But the difference between him and many other people is that he has taken ownership of his mistake. And I just like for you guys to remember that at one point, all of you have done a mistake as well. And the difference between him and some of us in this room is that he's being pointed finger at. Many people are looking at him because he's a leader. And that is true. Being a leader is not just easy. It is hard, as you guys can see. But we should also understand that he made a mistake. And he has taken ownership of it. And he had told us already what happened. So I just want to give thanks to everybody that's out there listening. We just to take that into consideration. Again, thank you, Mr. Medina, for taking ownership of that and explaining to us what the mistake was. And thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Yes, Commissioner. Thank you.
Mayor, for me.
Yes, Commissioner Carrillo.
Yes, my name's Mayor Procton Bobby Carrillo. I've probably known Ricardo Medina longer than anybody else, probably in this room.
Yeah.
We go back maybe forty years. We've been on different sides of the fence. We always don't agree. But we all, we always come together on what is right, and it's right for the City of FAR. It was an opinion, and I think we all should be able to have one. Whether we believe that in his, what he believes in, and you're going to believe what you believe in. That's what makes America great. You've got to remember, a lot of us military people who served our country, we did it for the right reasons. Why? So you all could be out there protesting. People burn the flag every day. Is it right to do that? In my opinion, I think they should be arrested, kicked out of our country. But you know what? Serving the military, we gave these people that right to do that. So whatever anybody wants to say, because it's said every day about the African-American culture, the Hispanic culture, the Orientals, every day. And it's sad. And it saddens me. Because there's so many people out there that have given their life to let you have that right to speak. Have your right to make your comments. And I'm sure there's going to be people up here speaking negatively to Mr. Medina. Is that right? No, because you're out here giving your opinion. And all the people that served our country gave you that right. We're going to sit here, and we're going to listen. But are we going to agree with you? I'm not going to say I'm going to. You might have, your comments might be fantastic, and I will. But just like Mr. Medina, and all of us, we all have a different mindset. But let's not forget, we are, there's a lot of people out here that served our country to give us this right. Just like you all have the same right to be out here speaking. I'm, I don't know if we have people up front because it was supposed to be... I don't do Facebook, period. I just, people just send it to me, and I'm like, okay, whatever. To me, Facebook, to me, is garbage. That's my opinion. Am I going to get stoned because people said, because I made that comment? Well, you know what? It's my right to say that comment because it's my opinion. So, that's all I'm saying. Ricardo, I support you a hundred percent.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. All right.
Mayor, for me.
Yes, Commissioner Wajardo.
Commissioner Wajardo, Azar Wajardo. Todos sabemos que ahorita vivimos en un clima de división causado por la política nacional. Unos contra otros, the right and the left, Democrats, Republicans. Estamos divididos como sociedad. Y a causa de eso, llegamos a este punto. Alguien hizo un comentario por error y se convirtió en algo pasional para alguien que cree que están atacando a alguien. Fue un simple error, que no se debe de hacer más grande de lo que es. Yo acepto la disculpa que el comisionado Medina dio. Pienso que es sincera, y de ahí debe determinar esto. Ya que vivimos en un país libre donde podemos expresar lo que queramos. Gracias a, como dijo el comisionado Carrillo, gracias al servicio de ellos militarmente, nos da esos derechos. No debemos hacer una tormenta en un vaso de agua. Gracias.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I just want to say something.
Yes, Commissioner Flores.
It's a Flores, Commissioner, place six. First of all, I'd like to say that I feel really honored to be part of this country. And I feel very humbled to be brought up in a place where my dad, my family members, my son, part of military, that are out there fighting for our rights so that we have the freedom to protest and to stay at our opinions. But we're human. I've made many mistakes in my life. And I don't think that anyone here can say that they have not made a mistake. We do need to stand together, and we do need to make change, and we need to make positive change. Things do need to change, but it needs to start with us. Are we going to make mistakes along the way? Of course we are. But when we've got people guiding us and correcting us and bringing it to our attention, you know, hey, so you made a mistake, you know, this was wrong, or what were you thinking? It's part of my growth and becoming who I am. So together, as a City of FAR, we are making positive changes in life, in our decisions, for our children, for our families. But we need to continue to stand together. And I understand the stress behind an error, a mistake. And I understand how humbling that is. And I believe Medina in that he's worked hard. And he's been done, and this, I'm very new at this. So any questions I have, I go to Medina. He helps me out, okay, you know, you need to take a look at this. And he gives a different perspective. It was an error. But together, we can come out strong for our community to stop the racism, to stop the finger pointing, to stop the arguing, to stop the division. We need to be one.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Ready to move on?
Yes.
All righty, thank you.
I'll put it back in order. And we're going to go into public testimony.
Yes, sir.
I have Ms., first one, Ms. Margarita Gonzalez from Donna, Texas.
Checking outside.
I check, mhm.
I'll do it now.
All righty. Next one, Mr. Hunter Sturgis from McAllen, Texas. Mr. Hunter Sturgis? One and a half minutes.
Hi.
Hi, Mrs. Sturgis?
Yes.
Good. You're McAllen, right?
Yes, sir.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. All right. As an elected official, Ricardo Medina represents FAR and the larger RGV. The City of FAR cannot go on excusing his bigoted comments. His comments show a larger lack of professionalism and care for valley citizens. Ricardo Medina has made an official comment through Mayor Hernandez claiming he had no context for the situation and believed Mr. Peña was defending his business. Even if that was true, one, why would you be defending violence against members of our community with no indication of being a threat? They are visibly unarmed and peaceful in the video. And two, why would you be supporting Mr. Peña's racist remarks? Regardless of the circumstances of those incidents, Medina chose to venerate a violent and racist act. His words carry an impact that emboldens racism, anti-blackness, and violent behavior. This was no mistake for Medina. He has a history of making bigoted comments. Anyone can see clearly in the video of Mr. Peña threatening peaceful protesters with a chainsaw. We do not condone this visual, and neither should of Medina. I am calling for Medina's resignation and urging us as a community to elect someone who is fully immersed, present, and in the know in today's world with the people. As a valley resident, my opinion on this matter will be heard.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. All righty. Ms. Laura Smith from West洛co, Texas? Laura Smith? All righty. Sarah Southee? If I'm saying it correctly? Southee? Sarah, from Edinburgh, Texas?
Hi.
Hi.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Southee, and FAR was the first place I lived when I moved to the valley. The comment made by Commissioner Medina was offensive, racist, and unacceptable. He has the right to make that comment, but as an elected official and a public servant, we have the right to hold him accountable and to a higher ethical standard. Expressing his support for this racist violent act makes the commissioner unfit to hold this office and represent the people of FAR and the valley. His apology is not enough. Apologies are empty words unless there are actions behind them. We all have work to do to fight anti-black racism as a society and individuals. What actions will the commissioner and the entire commission be taking to fight anti-black racism in the valley and FAR? It is not one bad apple, it is an entire system. I need my elected officials to lead, and this showed a profound lack of leadership. I am calling for Commissioner Medina to resign. We need better. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Andres Bernam from McAllen, Texas?
Hello.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I stand with you today to talk about the future of this commission, the City of FAR, and its impact on the country and the world. Today, we're witnessing a national, international uprising and awakening in consciousness of people of people that are resisting the legacy, not just of a few bad apples, but of a system of systematic racism and white supremacy, particularly targeted at black Americans and the descendants of slavery and colonization. What we witnessed in this video was an act of violence that put the public in danger, and the subsequent glorification by Commissioner Medina of this man's violent actions with a chainsaw, which is a violation of the public trust, in my opinion, that demands accountability. With all due respect, sir, I think that we don't deserve a lecture as younger people who witnessed the death of Trayvon Martin, the death of Eric Garner, the death of Sandra Bland, the death of Eric Cierra and Mercedes, and today, and these days, the death of George Floyd as well. And the separation of Latin American children from their families on the border. We are still witnessing the legacy of this racist system today. I believe that the future of this commission deserves certain standards of ethics and responsibility, and the people of FAR, of the Rio Grande Valley, and of the country deserve some accountability. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. We need Guadalupe Pardo, Palafaria, Texas. Guadalupe Pardo? Hi. It's okay.
Hello, Commission. My name is Guadalupe Pardo, and I wrote this petition.
Sure.
I wrote the petition with hopes of reaching a larger message to my community that wants accountability, in personal actions as well as professional. The valley has given me so much in my life, my friends, my family, my goals and my values, but there has always been an underlying truth. We, as a predominantly Latinx community, never bothered to breach, and that is the complicity with which our government, our teachers, and our family and friends stand by injustice. The larger message I wanted to share with this petition is that it is finally time for there to be accountability. Mr. Medina, with your well-timed ignorance, does not mean that we will excuse your comment. The violence which you garnered praise for when you willingly said this man should be a hero hurt the people of your community. The people that stood on the sidewalk that day being lunged at with a chainsaw and scared for their lives. The people that organized and chanted in the hot sun all afternoon, even with the possibility of backlash and violence was there. And the longer line of people that stood for their community in FAR and were killed by the police. It would be remiss to ignore the longer history of police violence FAR has seen, and which you should be aware of. We need a representative that puts the safety of valley citizens, regardless of circumstance, in priority. We need a representative that acknowledges his history and strives to do better. Unfortunately, me and the 1,350 people who signed this petition that I brought to you today do not believe that is you, Mr. Medina. And that is why we are asking for you to do the response.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. We, Ismael Melendez? No? Ismael Melendez? No? Okay.
Yes, sir, it's all we have, the public testimony. We'd like to ask to go into executive session now, mayor.
Alright, and according to section 551.071 to 551.087 in the Texas Government Code, the Forward Board of Commissioners hereby give notice that it is convenient to executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, the time now being 4:31. We're back, time's 4:57.
Thank you, mayor commissioners. We're back in regular session. 3A, administrative consideration action, if any, on submittal reimbursement to Hidal County for CARES Act funding and finding all submittals reasonable and necessary for intended use. Yes, sir, in your packets we provided you all, all the submittals we intend to submit to the county. We did do a pre-clearance with them, sent them on Monday. We're gonna do the formal submittals next week, once we approve the actual or local. And we're asking you to find all the items and submittals reasonable and necessary for the intended use. We'll approve.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. 3B is just a discussion item, does not require any, any motions. 4, contracts and agreements. 4A, consideration action, if any, on subrecipent agreement with Hidal County for the CARES Act funding. Yes, sir, in, in the packet I gave you all is the proposed interlocal from the county. Staffs recommend approval. There might be some changes coming down, so I'm asking you to give me the leeway to negotiate and accept those changes on behalf of the city.
We'll approve. Thank you. Second, Medina? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Thank you.
So adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. We're adjourned at 4:58. Thank you, everybody. Have a good weekend.